We're going to get started after the agenda review. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, an ordinance on second reading. An ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for abandoned property scattered sites in the city of New Brunswick. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing, Parked, Section 10-16, 030. Schedule 25, No Parking, Cirkulation, or Special Traffic Regulation, circulation. Reference to Hard Rock Street, High Street, Division Street. And we have three, an ordinance of the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey authorizes the city of New Brunswick to grant a 0.15 acre easement to a public service electric gas company over a portion of the block, Block #1, 03, as shown on the tax map of the city of New Brunswick for access to urban crossings and conservation areas. Then we have ordinance, first reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-20, Handicapped Parking, Schedule 40. For parking spaces at handicapped persons, add two residential handicapped parking spaces at 116 George Cameron Avenue and 244 Power Street. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Stopping and Standing, Parked, Section 10-16, 210. Schedule 38, Time-Looked Parking Areas, Reference to Sedan Street. Then we have resolutions. One, approval of general amendments. Two, approval payroll. Three, authorize refund for deemed tax subsidies. Four, approve amendment of resolution R-101-820, reason change date. Approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Five Move Five You at Rutgers University for the benefit of children's specialized hospital foundation incorporated. Dates and times, various dates, in October up until October 28, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Alternate dates, various dates in November, November up to November 4. Locations, College Avenue all the way up until Byer Street, non-protumkin. Five, approved request for city property, city property and street closure requested by Rutgers University. Crews, location Boyd Park for Rutgers Paul Classic Rowing, we've got a street closure. Forty Street, 100 Boathouse. Date, Saturday, November 3, 2018, time, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., police active duty, non-protumkin. Six, authorized renewal of inter-local service traffic agreement with Middlesex County Department of Public Safety for Health, for public health services and programs. Term, January 1st, 2019 to December 1st, 2019, not to exceed $251,454, $345,54 cents. Seven, approval of awards contract. Core of order may appeal to furnish and deliver cold water heaters, heater trans-receiver units, MXU and accessories. Specification number 69618W, not to exceed $463,212,50 cents. Eight, resolution notes, and resolution authorizing budget transfers, 2018 municipal budget. Nine, authorized purchase of police department under New Jersey State approved COOP, number 65MCSCBS, the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey Price Systems, Mall Chevrolet Incorporated, for four 2019 Chevrolet Talos with options, not to exceed $149,456, $856,48 cents. Ten, approval award of contract for concept printing, doing business as concept print, for printing and binding of various forms for the municipal court. Twelve-month period commencing, November 8, 2018, ending November 7, 2019. Resolution number 718P, not to exceed $29,192. Eleven, approved request for street closure, the use of city property requested by Rutgers University Recreation, Rutgers University Police Department, the New Brunswick Recreation. Location, Dugel Park for various streets for the big show, 5K road race to raise funds for Christmas gifts for underprivileged children, food banks, soup kitchens, and feed the hungry programs in New Brunswick. Street closure, College Avenue, Huntington Street for beginning of the race, College Avenue between Park and Senior Streets for the entire race. Enrolling street closures on various streets from George Street up to Stone Street. Date, Saturday, December 1, 2018, time, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. park. Time, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. street closure, police active duty. Twelve, approved resolution to refer amendments to the New Brunswick regimen redevelopment plans and planning board to review and recommendation. Thirteen, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Youth Empowerment Services to cover costs of operating programs for youth in New Brunswick. Location, George Street and Church Street, various dates in November 8 up until November 16. Fourteen, approval award of contract, Maxine Quality Food Company, furnish and deliver food products for the senior citizen resource center. Term, 12 months, term commencing, November 19, and ending November 18, 2019. Specification number 69918P, not to exceed $22,968,42 cents. Fifteen, approved amendment of resolution R-0.1849, reason for additional amount of $5,000 for the water utility, authorizing professional service agreement. NSYNC Municipal Systems Doing Business as First Fight Corporation for 2018 tax server building software support services, amount of $5,000. Sixteen, award of contract with Mot McDonald Group Incorporated, doing business as Mot McDonald for LOC for engineering and design services, water treatment, plant improvements. Specification number 70218RFP, not to exceed $1,738, spare and open. Seventeen, approved amendment and resolution R-031828, reason for additional amount of $2,000 for library air systems maintenance for temperature control HVAC maintenance repairs. Specification number 58117P, amount $2,000 approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of original contract. Eighteen, approved award of contract with Brunswick Lodging LOC, doing business, red property for emergency housing shelter, term 12-month period commencing October 6, 2018, and ending October 5, 2019. Thereafter, for additional 12 months, the city so desire rebid specification number 69518RFP, non-protumkin, spare and open. Nineteen, approved rejection of bids and authorization to rebid for equipment and labor. Specification number 69818P. Twenty, approved award of contract with AA Burnham LLC for the ADA grant improvements at various locations, specification number 927, that's 18, not to exceed $33,550. Twenty-one, approved relaxation of noise orders requested by Sky High Records Equipment Incorporated, reason for places framing in the parking lot at OHM Labs, the Terminal Road to lift the air conditioning equipment to the roof. Date, Saturday, October 10, November 10, 2018, alternate date, Saturday is November 17 to 24, 24, 2018, time, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Twenty-two, approved amendment and resolution R-101-862, reason, date of crane pick, October 13, 2018, approved relaxation of city noise order requested by M. Quiff Crane, reason for former crane pick at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital to set roofing materials. Saturday, October 13, 2018, time, 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., non-protumkin. Twenty-three, approved resolution R-101-829, reason, Phase 2 project at New Days, approved relaxation of the city noise order and road closure requested by Hill Bane Building Company. Reason for mobilization of tower crane at 90 New Street for standard at New Brunswick Project Streets, New Street and Livingston Avenue, George Street. Dates, Saturday and Sunday, November 10 and November 11. Alternate date, Saturday, Sunday and Sunday, November 17, November 18, hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Twenty-four, approved amendment of resolution R-071-824, additional amount of $3,000 for library with Sal Electric Company Incorporated for electric maintenance and repair services. Term, 12-month period commencing February 4, 2018, ending February 3, 2019. Specification number 49415P, not to exceed $30,000. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Twenty-five, approved chapter 159 birth budget insertion, State of New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development, fiscal year 2019, for library, adult literacy, and career pathway path program, C.O.A.L.C.P., not to exceed $99,851. Twenty-six, authorized lease of a copy machine for water treatment point from Rico USA Rico Model MTC 2053G color copier system, not to exceed $163.70 per month, commencing December 1, 2018, and ending November 30, 2022. Forty-eight month contract, state contract 404467G 207 copier, maintenance and supplies. Twenty-seven, approved award of contract with LexisNis Solutions for online access to accident reports for the police department. Term, 12-month period commencing November 19, 2018, and ending November 18, 2019. Specification number 70118RFP, spare and open. Twenty-eight, approved amendment of resolution R-071-844 with JTG Construction Incorporated for Wilcox Road, Rutgers Village Water Main Replacement Project, Phase 2 contract, a specification number 62517W, amount of $2,357.90. Approval of this, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of original contract. Twenty-nine, approved amendment of resolution R-11828, change order number two, contract fee with JTG for Wilcox Road, Rutgers Village Main, Main for the Water Main Replacement Project, Phase 2 contract fee, specification number 62517W, amount $3,821.60. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of original contract. Thirty, approved amendment of resolution R-118829, change order number one, contract fee with JTG Construction for Wilcox Road, Rutgers Village Water Main Replacement Project, Phase 2, contract fee, specification number 62517W, amount $428.40. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of original contract. Thirty-one, approved amendment of resolution R-041819, reason amount of $1,088.15 to pay outstanding invoice with Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated for books purchased by wholesale distributor for the New Brunswick Public Library, specification number 68217RFP, amount $1,088.15. Twenty-three, two, approved on premise Raffle, Raffle at the High Regency for Albany Street for Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation, November 17, 2018. Thirty-three, approved on premise Raffle merchandise at High Regency for 2 Albany Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey for Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation. Thirty-four, release of site performance bond in amount of $22,000, a balance of site inspection fees of $533.84. Gilberto Mercado, 173 Front Street, Block #98, Block #35. All right, thirty-five, release of site performance guarantee amount $134,245. To D and D LLC for Knights Apartments, Ray Sicker Street, Block #83, Lot #101, and 40. Release, thirty-six, release of site performance bond guarantee in amount $2,342.40 to 303 Commercial Avenue, New Brunswick LLC for 301 Commercial Avenue, Block #276, Lot #101. Thirty-seven, approved payment for cleanup property, location 3 Oxford Street, Block #99, Lot #5, amount of $2,787.97. Thirty-eight, approved payment for cleanup of property, location 133 Jones Avenue, Block #212, Lot #101, amount of $5,729.52. Thirty-nine, approved amendment of resolution with World Corporation, Do-Business, World Construction for senior citizen center exterior improvements, specification number 90917, amount of $52,071. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Forty, approved amendment of resolution R-101-868, release new dates, approval of restation of noise orders and road closure requested by Gervor Virgo, Virgona Crane Company Incorporated, reason for place of crane on Somerset Street between High Street and Division Street in orders of load, roofing material on the roof of Robert Wood Johnson. Date, Saturday, November 3, 2018, non-protumkin, November 10, 24, 2018. Forty-one, approved amendment of resolution R-091, reason, new dates, approved relaxation of the noise order, road closure requested by Precast Services Incorporated, reason, complete assembly of the Precast parking structure on Byer Street between George Street and Elm Road to disable the crane for the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. Dates, Thursday, November 18, up until November 8, 2018, up until November 8, 18, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Okay, and then best practices worksheet, CY 2018. And we have public discussion, dates to remember, so on and so forth. Got anything else you'd like to add? Okay, this meeting will come to an end with clerk please do us the honor of calling the roll.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yeah.
Council President Fleming.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and annual notice, which gave sufficient notice at the time of place, and conduct of all public meetings, and municipal clerk of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board on the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper in New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand complacently.
Our collective allegiance is with the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to those that are continue to defend freedom around the world and to those that we have lost since this violence. All right, we have minutes, most need to prove minutes, we just had it on.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes.
Okay, now we have correspondence, if you want to direct this. Correspondence. Okay, we have correspondence.
Yes. Item one, a request from Construction Management Associates, Inc. for a final inspection and the release of the site performance bond for 191 Hamilton. Item two, a letter from MCIA regarding the recycling program. Item three, a request from Alpha Row Alumni Association for a final inspection for 114 College Avenue. Item four, a request from Our Lady of Mount Carmel RC Church for a final inspection at 75 Morris Street, second floor. Item five, a public notice from the Township of East Brunswick regarding the consideration of amendments to the Township Zoning Ordinance, number 18-29-Chapter 228, Article X-A. Item six, a letter from the NJ DOT regarding the fiscal year 2019 Local Freight Impact Fund. Item seven, a copy of a remedial action protectiveness biennial certification for groundwater from Saw Bay, New Brunswick. Item eight, a no further action letter from NJ DEP regarding 75 Bartlett Street, area of concern, 1 550 gallon, number two, heating oil underground storage tank system. Item nine, a letter from New Jersey Masada Relief Squad regarding the collection of items for the victims of Hurricane Florence/Michael in North Carolina. Item ten, a public notice from Kelso and Burgess regarding Nielsen Crossings LLC applying for a site plan and variance application. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Council President, I'm the council. For purposes of our discussion with council, I would refer your direction to H1, the best practices worksheet discussion. I'll ask Mr. Lockwood to lead us along.
Thank you. Council, as you know, for the last eight years, every municipality in the state's been asked to complete a best practices worksheet. It is essentially 50 questions that the state asks of the municipalities that are graded by their answers. Those who don't follow a lot of best practices have stated help from them. That has not been the case with New Brunswick for eight years. Apparently Governor Murphy is going to continue with that practice, and at the moment, the finance director, Mr. Pettix and I are completing the questionnaire. There's 61 best practices questions this year, and there's an additional 25 questions dealing with opportunity zones, which Mr. Patterson has helped us prepare answers for. We're going to file this document by November 12. You don't have to take any action on it other than to be advised that we are working on it, and we will file it timely. But one of the best practice suggestions is that every year the governing body assesses whether the authorities that you have created continue to serve in the public interest and are managed more efficiently than if the city managed those functions themselves. So, to that end, I've asked John Clark, the executive director of the Housing Authority, and Mitch Karen, the executive director of the Parking Authority, they would attend the meeting, maybe speak briefly to you about their operations, maybe you have some questions for them, but I wanted to satisfy that requirement so that we could in the affirmative answer that best practice questionnaire related to the authorities. Thank you, you're welcome. So, John is on his feet, maybe he can come forward.
Council, good evening, Mr. President, how am I? Mr. President, the Housing Authority, as you know, acts also as the city's redevelopment agency in certain items. We currently manage the public housing in Section 8 affordable housing programs within the jurisdiction of New Brunswick. We also manage through an interagency agreement the Franklin Somerset Housing Authority and provide services for their public housing and Section 8 programs as well through a FIFA service agreement with them. We work very closely with the city housing liaison commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilman Rick Escobar, on a monthly basis, and we attempt to continue to follow the best practices outlined by the state as well as provided by industry standards. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the programs or operations that we offer.
General, is the board of commissioners, we are in full capacity or do we still have any vacancies? The board commissioners say obviously more.
Currently, we have one vacancy on the board, and that is the state appointment at this time. All the other board members are appointed at its service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, council members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to give you an overview of the Parkin' Theory. I was going to do a PowerPoint presentation, but I thought that might be overkill, so. So, August 3 of this past year, the Parkin' Theory celebrated 70th anniversary. It was established in August of 1948. The original ordinance is actually hanging up in the Parkin' Theory's conference room, and if you read the ordinance, you'll find that the purpose of the Parkin' Theory remains as relevant today as it did 70 years ago. And that purpose is to promote the free flow of traffic, improve public safety, welfare, and provide sufficient off-street parking. One way to achieve this is to construct and operate off-street parking facilities. Currently, MPPA owns and operates eight parking garages, and as we all know, right next door is the ninth one being constructed now, which is 344 spaces, which will bring out inventory of off-street parking to 7,000 spaces. The MPPA also employs 100 employees or people, including their general responsibilities are the enforcement of parking regulations, which frees up the police to handle other matters of concern. We also have parking services representatives provide parking, I should say, provide customer service to the parking patrons in our facilities, and they also act as an extra incentiviers for the police. We provide clean team services, including sidewalk and curb line cleaning within the UEZ and SID areas in the winter. They also clear the pedestrian walkways when snow accumulates within the SID area. We offer valid parking services within New Brunswick. We currently have the Eldridge Hotel and various restaurants as our clients. Our parking management knowledge and know-how is attractive to other organizations as well as we currently manage and operate five parking facilities owned by others. The largest being the 800 space Jersey Eddie Parking Ride, which is owned by New Jersey Transit. The MPPA operates and manages 800 on-street needed spaces utilizing smart news, which allow for progressive pricing and the use of Park Global to pay for your parking using a smart phone device. Overall, the MPPA manages approximately 10,000 public parking spaces within New Brunswick. Our customers include the county, Rutgers University, healthcare providers, and the patients, as well as communities, residents, and many employees who work in New Brunswick. We also administer and manage the residential parking permit program with over 6,000 permits outstanding. In addition, the MPPA processes on-street handicap parking space applications for those that need accessibility close to their home. Applying our parking expertise, a year and a half ago, we successfully introduced and implemented digital permitting using LPR technology. This reduced the need for residents to visit our offices to obtain permits, these applications can be done online. We have also recently introduced a reservation system to enable patrons to reserve parking in our garages prior to arriving to their destination. We have been and still are a vital partner in the redevelopment within the city by financing, constructing, and providing parking facilities for a number of redevelopment projects. More recent redevelopment projects the MPPA has been a part of, a partner of, is the Longest Sector Gateway and Transit Village, and currently the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. In addition, we lease and manage over 200,000 square feet of retail commercial space within New Brunswick. With the continuing successful redevelopment within New Brunswick, it is vital to have an organization with parking expertise that MPPA provides. We provide a service to over 1 million patrons annually who use our parking facilities. That number will continue to grow as development continues in New Brunswick, increasing demand by both residents and businesses called New Brunswick Co. We are financially self-sufficient by means of parking fees and rental income. With $32 million budget, the MPPA is run efficiently and responsibly, meeting all our financial obligations. As you see, the MPPA remains as vital and important to the city as it did 70 years ago when it was established. We look forward to being a part of the city's continued growth and development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
The second piece of that is, you know, would the city manage these same functions or provide these services more efficiently than the two authorities? I, being the administrator for 26 years now, would suggest that it is, that the answer would be no. We could certainly do it if there was no other option in town, but I think the two authorities function more efficiently than we could, and, I mean, we have our hands full with the other services that we're responsible for, and I don't know if the liaisons, two of the authorities want to say anything, but nonetheless, I'm glad Mr. Clark and Mr. Karen came out.
All right, thank you. Oh, ordinance. Okay, we have ordinance, all right, we'll move on to the ordinance. We got ordinances on second reading. Orders on second reading, and ordinance to adopt, number one, an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for abandoned property scattered sites in the city of New Brunswick. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on it? If you mind, if you have five minutes, let me give your name and address for the record.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Milagro, soy residente de la comida.
My name is Milagro, I'm a resident here in New Brunswick.
Soy miembro de activo del proyecto Esperanza.
I'm also an active member of the Esperanza Project.
Bueno, y esta noche venimos con el grupo.
Tonight, we're coming with our group.
Que por favor si ustedes pueden aprobar la ordenanza de las casas abandonadas.
Asking you to approve this ordinance related to abandoned properties.
Voy a dar un ejemplo muy breve porque sé que estamos con un minuto limitados.
I'm going to give a brief example, you know, we're short on time.
Bueno, yo vi una liestimar al costado de mi casa, por años ha habido una casa abandonada.
And I'm going to, I live on Joyce Kilmer, and right next to my house, there's been for years an abandoned property.
De lo cual, bueno, en esa casa se propiciaban mucho las plagas de diferentes...
And that attracted a lot of tests into the property and around. And residents and owners around there were informing the city about what was going on, sending letters, asking them to take a look at the property. And I spoke with Charles, with me, regarding this topic of abandoned properties. And so, we talked and decided to do an inventory, a census of abandoned properties. This was several years ago in the community here. And so, we went block by block, house by house, taking notes on those properties that were abandoned. And we saw how sometimes then folks get into those abandoned properties, and there can be a threat of fire. And so, we and our neighbors, we're going to learn the city about the particular property next to mine on Joyce Kilmer, and thankfully, due to these new ordinances and efforts, it is now being fixed up at last. So, I'd like to ask you to please approve this ordinance to continue this work on abandoned properties, and good evening, thank you. Good evening, my name is Xavier Cordero. Until recently, I lived at 300 Redmond. And one of the reasons we decided to move from that house was that directly in front of us, there were two abandoned properties. So, we saw is that even during the day, there were people entering and leaving those houses to conduct illegal activity. And Roosevelt Elementary School is just a block away, so when children were leaving at the end of the school day. And the people in those abandoned properties would often go out and talk to and be offering, we can only imagine what, to kids. And about three or four months later, one of those houses caught fire. And not long after, the other house next to it also caught fire. And then, a few months later, they knocked down those two houses and another vacant property in proximity. And it just goes to show that was the concern for safety, the abandoned properties was one of the main reasons why we decided to leave that particular house. And so, you know, it continued to worry about the children living around properties that may still be abandoned. So, I'd ask, from my heart, that tonight that you approve this ordinance, continue doing this work around abandoned properties. Thank you, good night. Good evening, my name is Ozzelli, I'm also a member of the Esperanza Project. I'm going to touch upon the same thing that my fellow project members did. I'm going to be brief, I live on Thompson Street by the Pratt preschool. And so, there are several houses on my block abandoned properties, particularly one, 310 Thompson, that has been in very bad conditions. And so, it's a shame to see children and families have to walk by houses like that. A lot of times, what I see is that people take advantage, see this abandoned house, and throw their trash at there, and. And so, just ask you to take that in consideration. It's very important for us residents who live in the community and around areas that have some abandoned properties, to ask you to take that into account, and to approve this ordinance for this work on abandoned properties. And just wanted to add one more thing, is the Esperanza Project, we often also, as much, often, once a month do community cleanups, and so if you can also help us with that, this ordinance, this work on abandoned properties, would be an aid to our work in cleaning up the neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, we have number two. An ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10-16, stopping and standing, or parking section 10-16-25, parking in several areas, special traffic circulation, reference to Hardenberg Street, High Street, and the Lewis Street. Anybody that would speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Three, ordinance, city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, authorized the city of New Brunswick grant, 0.15 acre easement to the public service election period gas over a portion of block 709-03. Lot number 1.03 is shown in the tax map of the city of New Brunswick, reference to Raritan River Conservation Areas. Anybody that would speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Mr. Fleming, can I just tell you the, I'm sorry, moving along quickly. Public comment was taken on this matter on October 25th, it was a public hearing here. One evening, three members of the public came out and asked questions of PSENG about the project. I think all the answers were satisfactorily given to those members of the public, but I just wanted you to know, it was a hearing in between the two meetings of city council. Appreciate it, thank you. Move your ordinance.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, now we have ordinances on second reading. First reading. All right, first reading, excuse me. An ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10-20, handicap parking scheduled 40, parking spaces for handicapped persons, add two additional residential handicap parking spaces at 116 Joyce Kilmer Avenue and 244 Power Street.
It will be ordered setting down Tuesday, November 20th, same date to be advertised, 6:30.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Then we have number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles in traffic, stopping and standing, and parking section 10-16-20, schedule 38 time limit parking areas, reference to Sedan Street.
Move the ordinance setting down Tuesday, November 20th, 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, now we have Resolutions 1 to 41. Anybody from the public that would like to speak on these ordinance, please give your name and.
Good evening, members of the council, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, would like to ask about 807, the purchase of cold water meters and MXU units. How many meters do you get for $463,201?
I'll look at the resolution real fast, and I might have to defer to Mr. Wallace on the matter. And I do.
About how far along is the one utility in replacing the entire, I guess it's 9,000, 10,000 meters?
In the last two years, we've replaced about 3,000 water meters out of roughly 8,000 accounted.
Thank you. Do you want to ask about 812, referral amendments to a redevelopment plan? Can the council, or maybe Mr. Patterson and Mike assess what the nature of those amendments are, and what is planned for that redevelopment area?
This relates to the new Redmond Street redevelopment plan. It was adopted back in 2008, back before the Great Recession. The opportunities for that area have changed somewhat since then, and so we're making a recommendation to the planning board and then back to the council that the current plan be voided, and we're going to look at doing a new plan at the, in the future, not too distant future on that. There are new opportunities for the city, as that area has been designated as part of the opportunity zones and part of the hub innovation area, and we'd like to take another look at what can be developed there. I think what's there right now isn't what we are looking to see, and we'll be coming up in a few months with some new ideas for the area.
Interesting, so just to be clear, the amendment is, that it's going to be completely thrown out?
Correct.
Okay. 827, posting of the accident reports for the police department online. Think it's a good thing, I'm glad the department started doing it. Can you tell me a little bit about the contract with LexisNexis and what that'll mean for the end users?
LexisNexis system, this is just a renewal that's been in place. This is a service that the public, they want to complete on redacted reports, the pay service. The redacted accident reports are available online for free to anybody, but this is just a renewal of the system that's been in place for a while.
Okay, I am familiar with this system. Just on the issue of the redacted reports that are posted, I see, at least as of a little while ago, they were mostly unredacted. What information would be redacted when they're posted to the city website, if anything?
Mr. Cradville is wrong, every report on there is redacted, every driver's license number is removed from the reports.
Okay, so just the driver's license numbers, is there any other information that might be redacted?
No.
I believe that's all the questions on the resolutions, thank you.
Anybody else on the resolutions?
Good evening, everybody, my name is Brendan Kaplan, I'm the Executive Director of the New Brunswick Office of Innovation, which is a non-governmental, nonprofit organization. And I just wanted to make an announcement in reference to our 111, 811, and I've been very proud to see programs like the Esperanza Neighborhood Project take leadership into their own hands, and work in such good constructive partnerships with folks like yourselves on the city council, with the mayor's office, so I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to take it upon myself and my organization to put all of this data onto the Waze mapping platform, so that all drivers throughout the city of New Brunswick are able to get information about what the most appropriate routes, given these road closures are. So I'm very proud to do this, and I hope to continue my service to the city of New Brunswick, inspired by so many of your wonderful constructive leaders in this town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Resolution? Seeing none? Move the resolutions?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Now we have items for discussion. By the council, anybody have? All right, I just wanted to congratulate everybody coming out yesterday, throughout the entire nation. Especially want to congratulate two council mates, Mayor of Victory, and the mayor, and everybody else. All right, now we go to public discussion. Public discussion. Please step to the microphone, get your name and address for the record, and remember that you have five minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Hampton, I'm a student at St. Peter's University Hospital, Hospital of Rutgers. I don't live in New Brunswick, but I live at Skyway on the Weymouth Campus, and I'm just here to raise some concerns about transportation issues and how they can actually be social determinants of health to the public. So, in my personal experiences, I've had a few issues with the train station at the train station in New Brunswick. Some of them are security service or safety, and I don't feel like there's enough, like, security around that area, especially during the time I took a few summer classes, and I felt kind of nervous throughout the whole experience at the train station. Also, there's been a few times where the elevator at the train station that I've been operating directly, and I would have to cast next train over to, I think go to Addison and come back down on the other platform. So that's my personal experiences, but I've also had the pleasure of meeting other people who've also had difficult experiences with transportation. One of them was a Hispanic woman, who, she was also a diastasis. She's a diastasis patient, and she speaks very little English, she knows English. Some of the concerns that I feel that can be addressed here is language barriers with the public transportation and bus services, a lot of people I feel who don't speak English are very shy to ask for help and directions, and I feel like it's kind of, could be difficult for them to even access information in their own language, to get on the right, to get on the right shuttles to get to where they need to go. Also, there had been transportation on some holidays, which is a concern for her, especially as a diastasis patient, and, yeah. I've also met a dog of a senior citizen whose concerns were about taking her abandoned members to medical appointments, especially when she has to take off of her own time and work to meet the needs of her senior, of her parent. So, one thing is that there was, that she talked about was. So one thing is that there was, that she talked about was that there is little to no accessibility on weekends or after 3:00 p.m. on any day of the day, which is a concern for them to make their own kind of, do their own kind of activities and do as much as much as they need, like going grocery shopping or just going anywhere really after 3:00 p.m. And that is pretty much it. I would also like to say that the city of New Brunswick actually ranks at a 7.2 in transportation services, which is higher than the rest of New Brunswick County at 4.1, which is pretty good, I appreciate that. However, there's a 35% of location efficient neighborhoods within the area, and I think that can be highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you. This is record days, can you, do you have something you can leave with us?
Or you're the person?
Now, you said, you were given this record day, so I just wanted to see if you have something in writing that you can leave with us?
Um, not currently, I don't know.
All right. We'll keep it, we'll, we'll go with that. Thank you.
I just want to add, to the best of my knowledge, at the train station, there have always been, at least for a while, a police officer, patrol in front of the train station. But it's good to know also that they still, that we have to be, you know, be more vigilant to that.
Yeah.
They're always there, there's a patrol car there, just to make sure, so I don't know what day you experienced it, but that's happened for a while.
Okay.
In terms of safety, so I just wanted you to know that.
Okay.
That it has been.
Thank you.
We also have some kind of call for busking or whatever. I was riding, I was about service Monday, Friday. Takes passengers to their appointments. Were you, was that the service that you were concerned about that you provide service after 3:00 p.m.?
I'm more concerned about anti-transit, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Yes, Daniel Moore, 133 Somerset Street. As voting was going on, this is something that I can't prove, I hear rumors about me and Mr. Charlie, like, like we're bad people, where council, excuse me, Vice President Fleming, do you really think I'm, excuse me, president, not vice president, excuse me, do you think I'm a bad person just because I come to the meetings and speak up about safety, safety issues? Then please tell me where I know how some of you do see me, turn up your nose against me of what I'm doing here with you and your family, wow, how you act like you don't speak. I'm not no bad person, how some of you really think that I am. I feel proud of what I do to make it safe here in New Brunswick. If any one of you seen the news last week, sure, it wasn't in New Brunswick, but wow, the four kids got hit by a car with school bus, three got killed, one injured, what, another location in New Jersey, what, kids getting hit? I feel proud of what I do to make it safe here in New Brunswick, so we don't have to deal with any accidents. And like I said, how soon you really make it, like I'm a bad person in doing that? And like I said, I'm proud to do what I'm doing, because like I said, also, I'm a victim, and like I said, what, money doesn't take away pain, money does not bring back a life. So yes, I will continue speaking up on things as long as the Lord let me wake up and come down here to make it safe for our children and pedestrians. Due to where I asked two weeks ago, and like I said, sure, I care about safety, what, with middle school, just from, like I asked with the streetlights, Livingston Avenue, Joyce Kilmer Avenue, and parts of Somerset Street, you have over 20 lights that are out and due to where, what, no one from the city, no one from the PSCNG responded to these locations. I took the address and the pole number, due to where I asked that it's getting dark early when our children are coming home, and I meant especially Livingston Avenue, extremely dark, and I mean, why, at least four of these lights are right by middle school. So I, who, who would take the honors in making sure that this will be done immediately?
I will take the list and
Please stop the clock, because I do have plenty more to say, thank you.
I will take the list and we will back to the PSCNG and ask them to make repairs at the lights that have been identified.
Because wow, like I said, if I would, due to Due to where, like I said, yes, if I couldn't see the pole number, how I wrote, what house number it was, and like I said, this is really ridiculous, just Joyce Kilmer, Livingston Avenue, and then like I said, also Somerset Street, and there's plenty more, but I did take the heart, like I said, in making it safe for our children and pedestrians.
Thank you.
And one thing, due to where he left a little earlier, when I said, wow, this was his night to him, I don't know, he got a little nervous, but yes, that's Mr. Mitch, if I'm not pronouncing names, Koran, I will give him an A plus, I will speak up to him, due to where he's one that believes in what I say, how each time at the traffic meeting, he makes sure something's done. Now, I spoke and showed you pictures, evidence of what I speak upon is unsafe, that's with New Brunswick High School, where Roosevelt Street or one of the streets right nearby New Brunswick High School, due to where, been asking for a four-way stop sign, Mr. Tom said, no, you cannot do that, due to where there are no accidents, but he took the time to go to that area, sat there over an hour, and yes, he even spoke up about how many people are running the stop signs, due to where it is very unsafe. I provided you with plenty of pictures, nothing still to be done. That was Mr. Tom Reece, said, okay, that was going to be a location for walkways, the line to stop here. Nothing has been done, and due to where, like I said, he spoke upon this, due to where I suggested, okay, can't be four-way, maybe you can get the bigger stop signs, like you have by, over Sedan and Jones, I believe, somewhere over there, bigger stop signs out there, because it's going to be too dangerous out there. So can something please be done, due to where that's a very high traffic area and too many cars are running the stop signs in that area?
This more is referring to the intersection of Roosevelt and Henry. Currently, there is a stop sign on Roosevelt at where Henry goes through. And I would also like to state that we've laid probably about 4,000 linear feet of crosswalks and refreshing stop cars all in that area behind the school. Specific to Roosevelt and Henry, a four-way stop requires certain studies to be done by the DOT, they're called warrants. However, we think that the easiest solution will be just to reverse the direction of the stop, so that the stop will have to be at Henry and allow Roosevelt to go through. Where there are speed humps on either side, on Roosevelt and on either side of Henry, so that should help with the potential of people accelerating, but we're just taking under advisement, we're just consulting with managers, make sure it's okay to just to reverse the stops at this point.
Okay, thank you, like I said, I surely would like to give him an A plus, due to where the past four or five months, where he's been keeping up with everything that I've been asking for, making sure that it has been done, and I surely thank him for that. And also tonight, I'm putting a search on two officers, due to where I've been trying to get to them since July, that's Officer Rivera, that's number 7304, Officer Mazan, that's 7294. I have to say, dude, these are two wonderful officers who have such a good heart, touch my heart, like I said, back in July, I'm not going to give up until I do see them and give them their gifts back, but due to where they took the time, as I was moving from 42 Comstock Street, I had just got out of the hospital, how I wasn't able to lift some things to move, where they took the time to help my son's daddy move things, and like I said, wow, these are two lovely officers who have a good heart, and yes, I won't give up until I see them and give them their gift back, so please, will you please, what, if they can come to the house, will you let me know when they're at the police department? Because like I said, wow, at least 40 minutes or so when they stay there to help me, which I thank them on that.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Xavier Franco, I live at 170 Hudson. What I come out here to is that I want to know if I can ask Captain Miller about Delgan and Troup and Seaman, that there's a lot of suspicious people doing their business in front of the liquor store and in front of the bodega on Troup Avenue, and I want to know if Captain Miller can answer me some questions.
Captain Miller?
There is a lot of activity to tap in there over the last couple of months, we're aware of it, we have ongoing investigations of all those locations, I'm not going to discuss any details of what we're doing there, but we are aware of what's been going on there and we're actively on top of it.
Thank you, Captain Miller. Another thing is that I want to address, thanks for the officers being out there, doing what they have to, and, but I want to know if there's any more, I asked Rebecca, councillor member, that she can do what she's doing and making this suggestion, and making the city get all these people who are doing business that don't belong on the street, cleaning all these abandoned houses, because there was two abandoned houses, there's on Seaman Street, and all over town. I would appreciate that the officers, what they're doing, because I got robbed on Seaman, I got jumped one time, and they took my wallet and everything, my car broke down at that time, but I got burned in the car now, and I had to call 911 in order to get the officers immediately to respond to the call. I got jumped, you know, I just appreciate what they're doing, and, you know, I don't have any other concern besides the officers, they're wonderful officers out here, and I just wonder if I can ask Mr. Captain Miller, at the end of the night, I want to talk, at the end of the meeting, I want to have a discussion with him.
And I just want to say, he was just concerned about the security of the area, Captain Miller, so that only that the police department was aware, and so just to publicly say that we are on top of it and we just have to, with him.
I always see Captain, sorry, Captain Odi, every, because he works, he does the training for the kids, and I see him all the time, I speak to him, I tell him, I'm very proud of what they're doing, he's pushing it, and I appreciate what he's doing, because we need to get these people out of New Brunswick, you know, I don't want them in front of the liquor store, I want an officer, if there's any way that we can get an officer during the day, because that's what they're, they're doing the day at the liquor store, right, on Seaman and on Delgan, but she's allowing the drug dealing in the store, so I want to know if they can take the actions, you know.
Captain, will you just explain to you, I said here, that they're working on it?
Yes.
That'll give too many details?
No, I know.
But we got it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors, appreciate it.
So, eightations council, my name is Robert, I'm a student at Rutgers, I'm here with my classmates, I apologize if I'm unaware of the proper etiquette for a county council meeting, as this is my first one. I had a question regarding item number 38, I see that the amount due is $5,729. I was wondering if you would, if somebody capable of answering could describe the size and properties of that particular area that requires that amount of funding to properly clean up that area.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. Jones, that's after you. Yes, but
We got a break on that film.
This particular property unfortunately was the location of a homeowner who was quarter, I suppose is what the best definition would be, and after numerous attempts and ultimately court intervention, we were able to gain access to the property and cause cleanup, not only inside the property, but on the outside of the property. We have photographs which show what the property looked like prior to the city's cleanup, and how this particular resolution works, and the statute works, is that if the property owner doesn't pay for the cleanup, we can clean the property. This is the first step in the process for us to have to pay the actual vendor, the contractor who did the cleanup, but it was quite extensive. Usually weed links are in the neighborhood of $500 to $1,500. My recollection is from my assistant city attorney who handled this, this was a project that took three days and multiple dumpsters to remove items.
Just to give you an idea, this is Mr. Anderson's, a nice neighbor there, that we see very close by, even the porch, you couldn't even see anything, there were scars in front of the house full of things, so, and that was just in front of the house, just to give an idea, that it was, it was really quite a big store in the community and also expensive, you know, I think it wasn't that expensive with the amount of things that that house
There is.
seems to be, yeah, because everything that they needed to do, well justified.
Would you happen to know who received that contract, who cleaned it up specifically?
The city courts, it was moved up by contractors who was under contract, and then which escapes me.
While he's looking All seasons maintenance says the company that cleaned it, certainly one of the worst houses I've ever seen, having
Who walked through that area for the last, since I've been on the council here, trying to get some things, with the court system, the judges have been leaning, we've had summonses given and everything else like that, finally got to a head and basically we got it cleaned up, but it was tremendously, tremendously a safety hazard, not only for our police department to go by there, but people who walk in the area, it was, as they said, it took at least three days and multiple dumpsters.
One last question is, how do you find your contractors? Because from a commercial standpoint, if I were to seek out one, I know for instance, 1-800-GOT-JUMP puts a cap of $600 per truckload, of course, as you mentioned, you required several dumpsters, I'm not sure, I would just like to know how you go about choosing your contractors?
Generally by bid, and all seasons probably has an annual contract with us. So they, whenever we find the situation as previously described, we ask them to do the cleanup, we pay them, you know, by invoice and purchase order, but generally we secure services like that through bid, and generally we are offering to, awarding contracts to the low bidder.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening once again, council, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, want to start by congratulating Councilwoman Escobar, Councilman Egan, on your victory. I want to thank everybody who was a part of this election, certainly the candidates, the poll workers, and, you know, I was proud to lead a movement, a team that worked very hard as a part of that election, so congratulations on your victory, wish you all the best. I appreciate the discussion that we had earlier tonight with the heads of the authorities, I think that's the first time I've ever seen that happen, where both heads were here for that discussion, and that was good, I think that, you know, it's a good thing to have those types of discussions, I would like to see it happen even more frequently. Regarding the best practices inventory, can you please ask your business administrator what the answer was to question 25? what the answer was to question twenty-five?
We haven't, as I said, completed the document yet, but let me see what twenty-five says, why don't you, why don't you help me?
Sure, so that would be the one, within the past year, have you assessed the authority or authorities, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay, we think, based on the conversation this afternoon, or this evening, we are likely to say yes to that answer.
Okay, and you'll cite this particular?
Yes, and, and the discussion from tonight ought to be put in place in the minutes, that's another best practices suggestion as well.
Right, right, I think that's question twenty-seven, and so I just want to point out that the last time that this discussion happened was actually two years ago, October nineteenth, 2016, and then I believe you all answered yes last year, because you did it on October eighteenth, and you said that it hasn't been a year yet, so we're going to count that as the discussion for the past year, and so I just want to be clear, there was no discussion of this nature in 2017.
I don't recall, I think we answered accurately in the previous best questions, best practices questionnaire, the reason, so I don't, I don't recall, but I think we have accurately answered the questions every year that we've asked them.
I appreciate the response, I just do want to point out for the record that I believe there was no discussion in 2017, and I think that, you know, we can do better, I think that the reason the question is there is to ensure that at least once a year, this is being assessed, and it's being discussed in public and being put in the minutes, and, you know, what, what basically occurred was a, a way of avoiding doing it one year, and I don't see a purpose for that, I think if, if the authorities are truly doing well, then we should welcome discussions about it even more than just once a year, and I certainly do appreciate your question, Madam Councilwoman, about the vacancy that's been on the board, and I think it should be noted that that vacancy is a vacancy that has existed since early 2013, when Mr. Capato stopped attending meetings, Governor Christie failed to do his job, did not appoint someone for the remainder of his term until the very end, when he appointed someone who ended up not getting sworn in and not serving, and now Governor Murphy has not done his job and appointed someone to serve there, so I would ask this Council, as I have before, for you to call on Governor Murphy to do his job and appoint someone to serve in that position on the housing authority board, there's a reason that the state's supposed to have a state-appointed person on that board, and I believe actually, I pointed this out to the governor's office, but their website, where folks can apply to be on boards and commissions, is neglects to mention New Brunswick Housing Authority as an option, and I've raised that, and I don't believe it's been fixed, and so I hope that you'll not only call on Governor Murphy to appoint someone, but call on him to appoint someone who's a resident of the Schwartz Holmes or Rotuson Village Public Housing Complex. I think that those folks have been underrepresented in these discussions, and ultimately, you know, they are perhaps the people in New Brunswick most affected by the decisions made by that, that commission, I know that there is a person who lives in another complex that the housing authority is involved in, serving on the board, but the largest and oldest public housing in New Brunswick has no voice on that board, and that's something the governor could change, and so that I hope people do that, and I also know that the mayor has an appointment to make, and perhaps you might have even more influence over him, you know, there is his person who's currently facing a, a charge of criminal harassment, and he'll be in court on December twelfth in North Brunswick Township for that, and as a result of that pending charge, the mayor has not given him another term, but he is serving in holdover capacity, and at any moment, the mayor could appoint somebody new, and he could pick a resident of Schwartz Holmes or Rotuson Village and give those tenants a real voice on the, on the, the board, and I think that would be a really good step for either the mayor or the governor to take, either way, the governor's got to fill that position, so I hope that you will push him to do that. And if I may also ask about the best practices inventory, can you tell me how you answer twenty-eight and twenty-nine, that's regarding pilots?
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine, we intend to answer yes to both.
Okay, can you tell me who is the official that's designated for keeping up on those pilot agreements?
The finance officer...
Mr. Penix.
...reviews the pilot agreements and the audits every year.
And so you're going to say that yes, there is a documented process for keeping track of those?
No, I said this is a draft document, but I'm telling you, I think we are, are going to answer in the affirmative to both, yes, I think there's a documented process.
Okay, and would I be able to get any documentation of that documented process?
You could, I suppose, ask Mr. Penix for how he does it, I don't know if he has it committed to writing, but it is something he does annually, and you could start there.
Okay, well, I figure if it's documented, it ought to be in writing, so I will follow, thank you for your answer. Want to agree that there's serious concerns at Delavan and Tru, can you please ask Captain Miller if he can confirm whether or not there was a shooting there on Monday evening?
Yes.
Yes, can he tell us were there any injuries or any arrests as a result of that incident?
One individual was shot in the shoulder, odd like regarding injury, there hasn't been arrests made at this time.
Thank you. We'd like to, you know, I guess, thank the mayor for joining the fight for fifteen and supporting raising wages for all of the workers in New Jersey, and I do want to ask if and when the administration has plans to raise the wages for its own workers, as I've pointed out a number of times, there are folks on the payroll who are making the $8.60 minimum wage, which is going to go up a few, you know, small amounts in January, and there are a number of people making nine an hour, ten an hour, and I just want to ask, is, is the city have any plans to increase wages for those employees?
And they're all full-time employees?
No, I believe they're part-time employees, but I believe that, you know, believe that Mayor Cahill supports raising wages for all.
The city intends to negotiate a successor contract with the city power unit that would take effect January one of 2019, negotiations are likely to get started next week.
And so like those councilors are a part in the union?
Those councilors.
Junior, senior councilors?
They are, at least positions recognized by the union, I don't know that they're dues-paying employees, considering their part-time capacity, but they would have, at least union, a union looking out for the best interests.
Okay, so they'll be part of that, that'll be part of the discussion, is those wages for those individuals?
I'm sure that they will.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, have a great day.
I just want to add, just say, quick, please comment about the housing authority, I do agree that we see a position needs to be filled, and in terms of the resident is having a voice, I think that fail to mention that, even though it's, it's on a different level, you fail to mention that there's a resident council that was just establishing a, a little bit over the summer, before the summer, and these residents have been meeting and they have been taking an active part of what is going on in terms of the situations, good and less so good that happens in the complex, and they have been very active, and it's working out pretty well. To the point that the Rascals, uh, Housing Authority Commissioners meeting, there was hardly any residents there, and there was usually coming in because there are some concerns, so obviously it's working, so it's a step that is worth mentioning, that the residents are being involved, and the processes I've been heard might not be on the board level yet, but they have been...
I'd like to remind everybody, Sunday is November eleventh, there's a veteran today, I believe there's a parade coming from Island Park to New Brunswick that's still on, as far as I know, some of us are marching, whatever, but if you can, not that you shouldn't do it every day, but, you know, thank a veteran if you can, or at least pray for those that have given their lives. Do you have any veterans in the audience that you could stand up? Thank you.
All right, one last thing, November is also a no-shake November for prostate cancer awareness, we've been encouraging, I do a group, I measure it's about seventy-five shakes, and we've been encouraging them to pledge to get, take a male member of their family to the doctor to at least get checked, you know, a lot of us don't like to talk about that test and stuff like that, but, I mean, slight inconvenience can save lives, so we just encourage everybody, if you're over the age of forty, African-American males using thirty-five, to schedule, you know, sometimes it's not the test that we used to talk about, but they'll do a blood PSA test first, so if you can just schedule that or get somebody, if you know somebody that's over thirty-five, get a PSA test, especially if it's in the family, I know a lot of people, I know it's a very prevalent thing, I know I've lost some people to it, and I have a few friends that have had it, they've gotten a check, and they caught it early, so if you could just, right now, if you're over the age of thirty-five, you can schedule the test, if you're a female, get a male to schedule himself a test, I don't like to talk about it, but that can save lives. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Over to Jer.
Same.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?